Your Honor, I have nineteen hundred hours right now. That says it's three minutes two. We're going by that clock or the real time?
I think you're accurate.
I'm the boss. We're starting now. There you go. Take your dogs, huh? The meeting's over. This evening, there'll be a slight delay because one of us has to get two oaths and one of us has one of them. And we can do two at a time for the first ones. All right, very good. And I'll turn it over to the mayor.
All right, so as Tom said, wow, new mics.
Yeah, it's nice.
You're live.
Yeah. All right. So we'll start, Tom. I'm just gonna have you stand. This is the oath for the Plan Commission.
Okay.
Which we missed at the last Plan Commission meeting. And these, by statute, have to be administered by the end of the month. So I will have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tom Allen.
I, Tom Allen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently.
And diligently.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Plan Commission.
As a member of the Plan Commission.
For the city of Warsaw, Indiana.
For the city of Warsaw, Indiana.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I will have you, when we're done here, I'll have you both sign and print your name on here and just pass it down to Kim. So Tammy, if you want to stand as well, I'll administer both of these for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Before I do, and including, Tom, your service on the Plan Commission, I always consider it an honor to give the oath of office to citizens who are willing to come in and stand up and be counted and make tough decisions sometimes and really guide our city to where we've, I think, in a very good position because of strong leadership from boards. And it's not easy. I know you give of your time and I know sometimes things aren't clear-cut. And it really is important to me. I started, I was on the Plan Commission for five years before I sought office. And I really understand how important it is, just as a citizen, to come into these chambers and make these tough decisions and help guide the community. So I truly, from the bottom of my heart, thank both of you for your service and your willingness to add another four years to your resume. So we'll start with the oath of office. I'll have you both raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Tom Allen.
Tammy Dalton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently.
And diligently.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
As a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
For the city of Warsaw, Indiana.
For the city of Warsaw, Indiana.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Tom, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
All right. Here you go.
Careful, the parking lot.
Just so you know, I wasn't here at the last meeting so I cannot approve the minutes. Some people will have to do that. Technicality.
Technicality.
All right, thank you again. Sorry for the brief delay. Collection of officers. Currently, we have you and I and...
That's it.
That's it, isn't it? Is that correct?
I make a motion to leave the officers the same as they have been.
Second.
So moved.
That's what I call a kangaroo court.
Things are a rope in the room somewhere. So moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposing this? Doesn't matter.
Well, John saw it after.
Yeah. Everybody wants to do this.
Everybody wants to do it.
All right, thank you.
You do such a fine job.
Oh, yeah, there you go. False flattery, too.
Yeah.
Get the praise.
I know why this happens. Meeting schedule approval for the Board of Zoning Appeals. The dates are in front of you. I assume all of you have a copy. Any objections to the dates?
I'd move to approve.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
We accept and approve the calendar schedule for nineteen. Two thousand and eighteen, November twenty-third, meeting minutes. And I believe one of us was absent for that. Do we have someone going to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November thirteenth meeting.
Without changes?
Without changes.
All right. And so seconded by Jeff?
Yep.
Very good. Those willing to accept those minutes as stated? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Unfinished business, two thousand nineteen oh one oh one dash fifty, Little Eagle Drive, variance from development standards. Doug Harvey Copeland Construction. Just for those who haven't been here before, I think you might have picked up, if you were in the audience, that we are part of the government, or we wouldn't have to do that oath. So we look at this as an impartial. Just so you know, the schedule will be, Justin will read the facts. We then will have discussion and questions from inside. We will then open it to those in favor and/or opposed. Then we'll close the meeting to the public, vote, and go forward. I think the counselor could probably tell us for sure, but in case someone disagrees with the way we rule, you can go beyond. That's correct, sir?
That's correct.
So, put the rope away, whoever had it. Sorry about that. With that, Justin, would you give us the facts, please?
So this case is for fifty Little Eagle Drive. The petitioner is requesting a variance from development standards to permit a pergola and a pool to be located closer than twenty-five feet to the rear property line along a waterway. The proposed layout shows that the pool would be twelve feet from the property line and the pergola would be twenty feet from the property line. And this is at the closest point of each of those. There's an attached plan, if you'd like to review that. If the petitioner's grant, or if the petitioner's request is granted, all state and local codes regarding pools would still need to be followed. And these are things like the fencing or a hard top. The twenty-five-foot setback is intended to protect the character and aesthetic quality of the waterways and lakefronts. A pool being flush with the ground would not have a visual impact on the waterway. The proposed pergola would also have a minimal impact as it is an open structure. Based on the information provided in the findings of fact, is the recommendation of the Planning Department that the board could reasonably provide a positive finding of fact in order to grant the approval of the requested variance from development standards. As I mentioned before, there's plans that show the proposed location of the pool in pergola and as well as an aerial image that would show the property and the residence.
For those that may not have that, the pergola, as I understand it, is an open structure, correct?
Correct. I spoke with the contractor and he said the beams would be six-by-six inch beams. So if you can picture that, I'm not sure about the height of the top, but the beams would, there'd be four six-by-six posts for the pergola.
And as far as any visual obstruction for the light view, which I know is very important to lake owners, that would be the pergolas and what we're really deciding, they can put it up twenty-five feet away if they're looking for a five-foot variance, just to be...
Correct. They're just trying to get five feet closer with the pergola. The pool, you know, also they're encroaching, but as far as visibility, that's, you know, flush with the ground, so it wouldn't have as much of a visual impact.
And there's no planned landscaping to obstruct the vision?
I have not, yeah, I have not seen any. They did not have to submit a landscape plan for this.
Okay, very good. And, oh, I'd like to make a note for the record. Ms. Tammy Dalton is abstaining from tonight's conversation and vote, as she is way too close to the party, so she will not be participating. We do have a quorum without her vote, though, so we carry on. Questions, comments?
Justin, you know, as I read this, I may have not missed it or just... Why can't they build it without...
Moving the five feet?
Yeah, without going outside to start with. What's the unusual situation that creates this condition?
This would maybe be a question better answered by the contractor, the resident. The resident, I, you know, from looking at the plan, I don't know for sure what...
Did it not come up in your conversations?
No, we, I just looked, I reviewed the plan. It looked like it was relatively tight in there, so they had rotated it. I'm not sure if it could be rotated in a different way, if that was, if that would fix the setback issue, but generally, we just...
If we open it up, we can ask questions on the other side. Very good. Any other questions or comments?
There was no written comments or anything like that that we need to be aware of?
There was a letter submitted from the homeowner to the north, and I believe it was...
Is that the direct neighbor, by the way, north?
Yes, direct neighbor to the north. So there was a letter submitted, it was in the packet, so hopefully, yes, I've had the time to...
That was the attorney's letter?
Yeah, correct, correct.
Scott, did you read that as well?
I did.
Okay. Dan, I thought you had some comments. Did I, did you want to make a comment or question? Jeff?
No.
Okay. With that...
Seems kind of tight. I'd like Scott's comments on it. Can he comment on it?
Well, he's free to, but we have to invite him to. Would you like to make a comment, sir?
Well, I think like most of these variance situations, it's, I think you're clear on the law. I expect you guys have been board members for some time. You're clear on what the law is. You're allowed to grant variances, you're a government body, that's why they come forward to you, to see if you think this particular property is fit for a variance or the use that they're asking you to do it. So I don't know that it's as much of a legal question as your judgment as to whether it meets the standards. The standards are set forth quite clearly in the ordinance of when it is that you can grant a variance and when you should grant a variance. So I guess my opinion about it's not all that essential to you all. It's your opinions.
I appreciate the comments. That sets the stage really well. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll open it up. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Your name, sir?
My name is Pete Lefring. I live at fifty Little Eagle Drive in Warsaw. And I would say about six months ago, we started planning for an addition on the back of the house, which falls within, and then the, put a pool in. I don't think there's, because the canal goes up at an angle, I don't think there's a place that you could totally clear it. You know, you could push it back a few feet.
Okay, for our assistance, what we're really trying to get to is why do you need five feet specifically? And that's what you're trying to describe.
Oh.
What is, what is causing it? I guess is the, is it the pool and sort of...
The pool does not fit on the property without encroaching.
Okay. And the pergola really has one spot for the size that you'd like to have, I guess, is the...
That's the ideal spot, but that's a few feet and you can move that back if it's a, if it was a huge deal.
So would, I, the hundred-dollar question is, would you prefer to get the five feet, but you could, your petition could be removed because what we're staring at is a challenge here?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any other comments here?
No.
Any other questions?
Yeah. You said, what is, is that like a pagoda or what is a pergola?
Yeah, but the strict definition of it, it's got a roof over it and you're sitting underneath it, but it's all wide open.
How high is it?
It's not a closed roof, it's just...
There's, other than the six-by-six, as I understand it, there's no opposing visual structure, other than maybe the chairs that'll be underneath it.
Correct.
And those are about three feet and down.
But that you could move without a big heartache to avoid this issue of encroachment?
Sure. I mean, it's, we put it because we positioned it by the pool.
Okay, and then what, what, the pool itself, how many feet of that is beyond the line that's allowed? Is it the whole pool or just part of the pool or...
It's at an angle, so I would say, I don't have...
Just might be able to answer that.
So the plan here, actually, I have a larger plan. The closest point of the pool is within twelve feet of the property line. The setback requirement is currently twenty-five feet.
But because it's flat to the ground, you're, that's why your recommendation was we could accept that as far as the pool.
Okay, where's the line?
Correct. So this is the closest point of the pool, which would be at twelve feet. This is the dotted line.
So half the pool is beyond that line?
Correct. This is the part of the pergola that would encroach, and each one of these would be one of the posts, the vertical posts.
So moving that wouldn't be a big deal, because a very small part of it encroaches that line anyway.
And he'd have to move it this way?
He'd have to move it this way. I think this is, this is the water right here.
Thank you. Move it that direction, so it would, if he set it further from the pool, it would get...
Where is the water that we're trying to avoid? This is the line right here. Yeah, this is the water. So he can't ship it this way, just straight over? He's got to move it back somehow, is that what you're saying?
The dotted line is the setback.
It appears for me from the site plan that they'd like it to be squared to the end of the pool.
Okay, so that means if they want to do that, they got to move it back here.
That at least is, I think, how Mr. Leifert's explaining it, is it move either further from the pool or not be squared.
Which, if he did that, it might actually...
Are you a city attorney or are you one of the parties?
I'm a city attorney.
Okay.
He's our new guy.
If they scooted it north and moved it within there, it could actually obstruct more, potentially, as you got closer to the property to the north. So that's something to keep in mind. Even though they were inside the window that they could build in, it might actually create more of an obstruction if they were worried about that.
So actually, sorry, Dan, so that's in?
That's addition?
The addition is already on?
No, I don't believe so.
That is in...
The addition is constructed?
No, the addition's...
No.
Okay.
And there's no question on that?
Correct.
Okay, so again, if we're moving it this way, that would, that would be actually a worse-case scenario? I think I heard someone say...
Could potentially, but you guys can...
Okay, but here's where it's planned, and here's where it's encroaching. That's the five feet right there.
Okay, correct.
The, the pool, yeah, we looked at moving it one way or the other. There's no way you can put that pool in there without encroaching some. And that's on the canal side.
Right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Leifert.
Okay, thank you.
With that, is there anyone here would like to speak in opposition of the petition?
Good evening. I'm on this snowy, slippery evening, I'm sure...
Well, you made it in without falling, right?
None of us want to be here. Jen Welfong.
Thank you.
I, what was it, a year and a half ago, bought forty-nine Little Eagle Drive. Been a fan of Warsaw since nineteen seventy-six and nineteen seventy-eight. I gals by the name of Ms. Klein and Ms. Warren. So I've been coming up here for quite a long time. But I'm a two-time pool owner. I dig pools. My concern here is, there are six pools currently on Winona Lake. All six pools, per two real estate agents, all six pools are directly behind the home and in between the lake. What we are talking about here is channel. So again, precedent, around six pools, all are behind the home and in between the home and the lake. The second thing is, the addition that is being talked about is lovely, I support it. However, we have five variances. Not one, not two, not three, not four, not five. The hot tub is beyond the variance. No problem, it's a foot or two. Number two, the sidewalk to the north comes to my property point. Number three, half of the pool is well into the twenty-five-foot setback. And both sidewalks around the pool are way beyond the twenty-five feet. So we have five variances that are being...
If I could, I think the hot tub's existing, but just to address the sidewalks, that's, they don't have to acknowledge that setback line. Any, the paving doesn't, just...
It doesn't qualify as a variance.
But the hot, the...
Okay.
It has to be, as I understand it, and Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, we really need to have something above four feet that's blocking the view before it really starts to come into play for a variance.
Okay.
So the pool at ground level, that's really not going to come into play as far as what we can rule on, as you, we just described.
Okay.
So the sidewalk, paving stones that aren't above the ground, all of those things don't count, literally.
Okay, and the slope, thank you, thank you. The slope from the pool down to the channel is anywhere from two to three point, three feet, four inches. So that entire sightline will be changed, and it's not seen on the drawing, but from the pool down to the channel, it's about a two-to-three foot, three foot, four inch drop. So that changes the line of sight along with the pergola. And so I've talked to two of the neighbors, we've visited, we had the neighbors over, I've talked to two other neighbors, and we would, we would request, and part of the reason I'm opposing is, is we would request that the privacy in the twenty-five-foot be honored and that the precedent of the other six pools be continued. And I love pools, I've had two. And they've been directly behind my house so that I would not obstruct anybody's view. And so that's what I'm, you know, that's, that's why I'm here. I've been a homeowner, been, been there eighteen months. They've been gracious. It's very awkward being here, but it's, it's going to impact two or three, three couples across the way. The neighbor at forty-eight is concerned, so...
Can I have a second here? Justin, did we do a mailing as well?
Thank you.
Yeah, every, yeah.
And what are the responses?
Nothing.
Yeah, just the one.
Well, what we do by our code is we send out a mailing to everybody that's going to be affected in some way, shape, or form.
Yes, sir.
And nobody responded negatively to it.
Yes, sir.
That, that's one of those things that plays into what we can and should try to do here. So again, I guess I'm having a little bit of trouble, you and I are just looking at this. What is the obstruction here? I thought...
I'm not sure. I'm trying to understand, what's the legal issue? I'm confused. I thought someone just said that if it doesn't rug up at four feet, it's not even an issue or is that...
I just said that and I didn't think it does. I don't think the pool plays into it.
But Justin just has got to...
The pool, anything with a permanent foundation, like the pool, would have to, would have to get a variance.
Yeah.
So it is part of the variance application as far as obstruction.
But just so I understand her question, how does this obstruct view if it's at ground level?
Well, she did make a point that there is a slope to the yard, and that would have to be leveled for the pool to be constructed. So in essence, they would be bringing the grade of the property, unless their contractor's bringing it down. I don't know exactly, but...
Are you the contractor, sir?
I'm not the contractor of the pool, but I'm going to be working with the pool.
How much are you changing the grade, you know?
At the end, from the closest edge to the pool, it's two foot two higher than the current grade that's there now.
So it's going up two feet?
Two feet. And then if they extend any type of paving walk, as it's drawn on the drawing...
Yes.
As it gets closer to the property line, that would be about three foot, four inches higher than the existing grade as it continues to the wall.
Wow.
We don't have a landscape plan because we didn't make one until we do, and we're going to have the variance to go forward. I think that's something that Pete is very sensitive with neighbors and to make sure that the line of sight and view is not blocked.
I understand your comments a little bit better now.
Yeah.
With, excuse me, sir, but with the change of grade, I'm not sure how that plays into that, because, you know, a lot of things can happen to a grade as far as, you know, your slope.
Well, could he not put up six-foot bushes or something like that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Now, that, the hard part is, is if he does do a landscaping plan around...
Yeah, if he's got a landscaping plan, if he's putting up...
This is all mute.
Don't you, by law, have to have a six-foot fence around the pool?
Four-foot fence?
Yeah.
Not necessarily. There, there are different codes.
We're going to have to break from protocol on this one a little bit. She's not done with her comments, at least I don't think you are, but we do need a comment from you. You were about to say?
No, the, it's got a hard cover.
Yes.
So there's no fencing whatsoever.
Right.
And so you put your button, the cover goes over the top.
Yeah, we, we actually did a little discussion pre-op to that, and that's, we thought that was the case. Thank you for clarifying. So there will be no four-foot fence all the way around it.
We didn't really plan any landscaping over there either, and the pavers on the back side, the canal side, I, that's just the architect's sketch. We weren't planning on having much of a walkway on that side. All the pavers and everything were going to be by the house. And the chairs and stuff were going to be by the house.
So really, what we're talking about, as far as what we're allowed to rule with, is the setback of the pergola and if we decide to take into the slope of the grade. I have to admit, I've been on this a long time and done some late property issues, and that one's never come up before. That's, that's kind of new to me. I don't know what exactly they have on that one, because again, if it's ground, ground level, all but, you know, four, five, eight feet of it, and you raise that two feet or three, I don't know how that, that comes into play for our code. Scott, have you got an idea on that?
Well, I would certainly say changing the grade is something that would be something that'd be appropriate for y'all to consider.
To take into consideration?
You know, I think her main concern is sightlines and stuff, so if they raise the grade by, I think you said, three feet, two inches or something, that's all...
One of the questions that I know I've dealt with this before, for line of sight, again, sorry for interrupting you, but this is all going to come into play. I think to a certain footage of a lake, for a physically built obstruction, not landscaping, it has to be four feet or lower as you get towards the lake. Is that not correct?
The closer you get to the lake, the shorter your fence could be, but he could put up the privacy fence down near the lake, I think currently like four feet tall.
Okay.
He could also, I know he said he's planning a hard cover, but...
Yes. That, actually, that's a state law. Yes.
He may also choose to put a different fencing up there as well, but, you know, it could be wrought iron or something that...
But what, what I'm looking at for, if they put a solid fence, Brockdaw-type wall fence up four feet high, that, that would be legal.
That would be legal, yes. uh, I, that's just the architect's sketch, we weren't planning on probably much of a walkway on that side. All the pavers and everything were gonna be by the house, and the chairs and stuff were gonna be by the house.
So really what we're talking about as far as what we're allowed to rule with is the setback of the pergola, and if we decide to take into the slope of the grade, I have to admit, I've been on this a, a long time and done some lake property issues, and that one's never come up before, that's, that's kinda new to me. I, I don't know what, uh, exactly they have on that one, because again, if it's ground, ground level, uh, all but, you know, four, five, eight feet of it, and you raise that two feet or three, I don't know how that, that comes into play for our code. Scott, have you got an idea on that?
Well, I would certainly say changing the grade is something that would be something that'd be appropriate for y'all to consider.
To, to take into consideration?
You know, I think her main concern is sight lines and stuff, so if they raise the grade by, I think you said three feet, two inches or something, that's all.
One of the questions that I, I know I've dealt with this before, for line of sight, again, sorry for interrupting you, but this is all gonna come into play. I think to a certain footage of a lake, uh, for a physically built obstruction, not landscaping, it has to be four feet or lower as you get towards the lake, is that not correct?
The closer you get to the lake, the shorter your fence could be, but he could put up the privacy fence down near the lake, I think currently like four feet tall. He could also, I, I know he's said he's planning a hard cover, but.
Yes. That, actually, that's a state law, yes.
He may also choose to put a different fencing up there as well, but, you know, it could be wrought iron or something that.
But what, what I'm looking at for, if they put a solid fence, Brock Doc type wall fence up four feet high, that, that would be legal.
That would be legal, yes.
And so when you look at the grade, which is only going up less than four feet, that's where I was kind of looking at this. And, and in your opinion, given the, the setback to that point from the lake frontage, uh, that is not an interference on that side, correct, from this side? Because it's far enough back, the, the, this corner on this.
So it doesn't seem to affect lakeside, because the setbacks are far enough from lakeside, but it's, they're asking for a variance from canal side setback.
And your concern is the canal side setback?
Yes, sir, it, because when you look through that neighborhood, there are, people have appreciated the 25 foot setback as you look down, 49, they're legal, and on the other side, and again, pools.
Well, to, to correct the, the little thinking, the other five or six pools don't come into play for this one. And, and I understand what your respect is, and I think that's admirable, and thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Again, it doesn't really come into play here, what they've done in the past, because they could have had a zoning variance 100 years ago. That's not what we're gonna talk about tonight. But my concern is trying to keep the line of sight as integral as possible, yet follow what the codes are, so.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Scott finishing that thought up, is the canal considered a sequeant as the leak on this particular line of sight vision? I mean, is that, this?
Well, the setbacks are 25 feet on the canal side as well.
Right. So that, that coming up three feet or so on the grade, in your opinion, is outside of that setback? Or is that still within, because he could put a four foot fence up, and you're really not, you're tied there? Is that, I'm just trying to figure out what the best way to approach this is.
Well, current, we currently have fencing codes.
Right.
And you could put up a four foot fence.
And it could be fully obstructed, it could be a solid fence.
It could obstruct, you could plant a tree.
I, what I'm trying to do is just make sure that we're, we're within what we're trying to deal with, because the, the grade change, I think if it was four feet plus, that would come into play, at least mentally when I'm looking at it. I'm just trying to get the whole sense of it right. To, I understand her objection, but it's still, what, what I'm looking at within what we're allowed to rule on as far as that particular specific variance, that seemed to be an acceptable limitation there as far as it's not going up four feet.
I think you guys are gonna take the total circumstances into play and really decide whether to approve it, and I.
Well, how many variances have we got, sorry Scott, we've got two variances that we're really dealing with, or?
It's one variance, but you could approve it partially if you chose to.
There's two pieces to it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I see two pieces to this.
There's two pieces to it, yes.
Okay. So, um, and I've been doing a lot of talking, but I think, has anyone else got an opinion, because we really have.
I want to ask her a couple more questions.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The pergola, and then the.
Pergola, I keep forgetting that name, pergola, you know. Um, I'm trying to understand what your concern is about the pool, is it just the line of sight, or is there something else?
Yeah, line of sight, having a, you know, having a pool, um, completely will transform my view to the, to the water.
What, a pool?
The pool with a diving board, the pergola, and the three feet, will, it, it, it will transform my view completely.
Okay, but are you, if he moves the pergola within the 25 feet and avoids that, are, are you still opposed to it, or is that, is it, is, is that okay with you?
Yeah, I, I am, because of what we found through other realtors, the precedent, and that poor.
Well, when you say precedent, I'm not sure what you're finding, follow through with that statement, what do you mean by that?
All pools on Winona Lake are directly behind the home, between the home and the lake. What's happening here is, it is going 23 to 25 feet into the variance zone on the channel side. The other six pools, which most of them are brand new in the last one, two, and three years, have been granted directly behind the home. And my opposition is not to the pool, my opposition is, I've asked twice, were other plans evaluated? And both answers were no. There have been no other alternatives. And all, this will transform my view, it, it will impair my view, and so I'm just, I'm wondering, what I asked both Doug and, and, and my neighbors is, did we look at any alternative plans? And, and they both said no.
Um, just a point of clarification, I don't, there must not have been any variance requests for the other six pools, because I would have read them. So they, they, they didn't break any of the variances, so I, we didn't deal with that, correct?
Yeah, a lot of us are in Winona Lake too.
Oh, they're in Winona Lake, not the city of Morrison, okay. All right. I'm sorry?
There's a couple of them in Morrison.
One of the things your letter.
But they didn't come in front of us. I can assure you of that.
One of the, uh, statements the attorney's letter talked about was property value, do you have anything from realtors indicating that this, this is gonna affect property values in your neighborhood?
Rick, great question, I received this letter on the 14th. Uh, I hustled, I called Doug on the 16th, met with Pete and Meg yesterday, talked to two realtors, and they both said absolutely, it'll impact me. And, and, but they, they, they were not gonna put anything in writing, as, I mean, literally, I talked to him the last two, two, three days.
Is the mere fact that the pool is there, or the fact that the pool encroaches in the 25 foot line?
Uh, that, and the pergola, and just the.
Well, no, wait a minute, my question is, is it the fact that the pool is where it's located, regardless?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but then that's gonna happen here regardless, because they can do that to some extent, it would be legal if they get within the 20 foot line, so that part would exist.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'm okay with that, I'm okay, that, that's why I'm saying, I would love for the variance to be adhered to, or let's look at some alternatives.
But that's physically impossible, apparently, from what I'm looking at, that pool can't possibly move far enough to the, uh, to the side without running into the house, is, from what I'm seeing.
Yes, sir.
It's from here to here, he's got 12 foot.
Yeah.
And it's more than 12 foot from that corner.
And, and Rick, what I, what I'm noticing with the other six pools on the lake is, they're between the house and the lake, and I'm wondering if that has been.
Why is that an issue, I'm not sure, I understand that, I'm not a lawyer.
Because then it doesn't impair my view, and that's how all other six pools have been done on the lake.
They can.
When you say impair, what does that mean, it's not blocking your view, you just don't wanna see a pool, you look out over the lake, is that?
Well, here's my view yesterday.
Yeah.
Now picture a pool with a diving board, a pergola coming in, that hot tub is extending in the variance. That right there is past the variance.
Yeah.
So this entire view of mine, with three feet, two, two feet, I used to work at Caterpillar, so I know my grades, two feet, two inches to 3.4 inches up, this, my entire view will be completely changed. That's why I love pools, I would just ask for an alternative drawing by the pool manufacturer, where are the other six on the lake, and that is directly behind the home.
This is a channel, is there a lake out here or something?
No, that's, the lake is.
Channel here.
Yeah.
Channel here, and where's her house?
Here.
Okay.
This is.
I look, I will look across the pool.
She's here, looking this way.
Yeah, and we sent a photo in.
Okay. And where is the garage on this structure here?
That's her house.
Yes, where's the garage?
Her garage is on the south side.
That's on the south, that's right there. And so there's, I'm sorry, there's living area and view from here.
Yeah, she's looking out a window when she got pictures.
And there's a window on this side.
I was just checking to make sure that I got it all laid out right. And what's the?
This is on the channel side.
And the pool would be here.
So the pool would be out here by, this is her patio.
That's her balcony. And that, that would be a window looking out to the pool.
Looks like a channel.
The channel side and the pool there, okay. And the pool would then be right there.
Yes.
Right, there, yeah.
Okay.
Doug's got a picture.
This is off of Google Maps, and this is the area from the beacon site. So the channel actually breaks away, the channel is right here.
Hey, you're welcome to come up and look at it.
Sure. So, so this is, this is Jen's property, this is where the pool is filmed.
Between the, it's probably just true. Yes.
A color picture, this is the trees and stuff, but anyways, as, as the, as the channel bends and opens to the lake, that's, that's what we're talking about. So her, her line of sight.
Would be.
Direct line.
Yeah, would be.
So, and so what I've been mentioning about the six of the, um, and I have those, they all are directly behind the home. And having had two, the, the pools are directly behind the home, so.
From, all right, where, where is directly behind the home?
Right there.
Down here.
On the lakeside.
And just to clarify.
See, to me, that's my front yard, so I'd say that's to the front of my house.
From the, from the.
I call behind the house the roadside.
The rest of the home isn't yours, is it, architect didn't finish it, the rest of the home continues this way.
Oh, yeah.
So, so, yeah, this is, this is.
So there's no open space there?
There is not any open space.
So where's he putting this pool, other than there?
Well, there's 25 foot setback there, and there's 25 foot setback here.
But is there even physically space there, if this is the water line or whatever, I don't know.
The, this back here would be your water line, the property line?
Yeah, but where, how?
And this is the setback, setback.
And this is the house.
Just like here.
Continuing this way.
So let's, let's take this one out here.
So what you're saying is, can we put it here?
But then he's gonna be over the, he's gonna have the same problem there.
Yeah, but it's his setback.
But it's his setback.
It's his setback.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't obstruct the view from anybody down on the channel coming up?
Yes.
Well, if you, no, the, the point we're making is, is if, if he's obstructing, violating this setback, the only one that can complain is him, I think. And then here, because of her line of sight, and the setback line here, then she's allowed to state her case, which is, you know, it's over the setback. The, the issues that we're trying to deal with is, okay, um, he could put a little bitty pool here, and then put a four foot fence out to here as a security, and that's a state law. So you're, what, what I'm saying is, with the four foot rule, he could put a Brock Doc.
Yes, sir. And while we're bad pools.
Okay, so that, that would, now you wanna talk about obstructing your view, that would be gone.
And.
And that's why it's challenging for us, because what we're dealing with is, we've got really two variances. Is this a problem, and is this a problem? And that's why I've, I've leaned on counsel on this particular one, because with, if, if you're going from the bottom up or the grade up, you've got four feet to play with, and this coming up four feet, yes, is going to change your view, but again, it's below a four foot raise, which is, to me, and that's where Scott and I have talked about it, um, that seems to be within the prerogative of it. Uh, so if we, that's what we can decide on, is, is that going to be within our prerogative as far as the zoning board? And again, with that, whether we rule for you or against you, you still can go beyond us, so it's, it, it's a little bit of a debate your point of what we do next, but now, I, what I'm trying to get to is, what we've got is, the pergola here, and that, I don't, you haven't really talked about that. Is that also a problem for you? Because I don't know where that falls in with your, your statement. Again, I'm gonna split this into two issues right now, so pergola, is that a, you haven't brought that one up, is that a?
I would like to preserve the 25 foot setback, so I think.
Okay, so that, that.
I think that needs to be tightened in.
Here, we're talking about, right, that, so you're talking about taking three feet off the pergola?
Or, or just moving it.
Yeah, and he's already agreed to that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's off the table. So what we're talking about right now is, with this 25 foot setback, changing the grade of the last how many feet, sir? Where's the grade changing here, how far back does this go, right?
Two foot two at this point, and if he puts the pavers out here, which I think he's decided he's not going to, this would be an elevation of three foot four.
So we've already just, we've literally pulled the two things off the table, other than you're putting a pool in. Is that correct? You're not gonna change the grade at this point of her line of sight?
Well, no, but I mean, when, you're gonna have to, from here, you're gonna have to slope it down.
Slope it down.
Slope it down.
For grain, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so then, the last thing that we're dealing with is the pool itself, uh, and not preserving the 25 with a ground level pool. That's the other part of the objection, okay.
You, she mentioned a diving board, I've just got curiosity, you don't put a diving board?
No, diving board, you can't really have them with the cover like that, but it's just for little kids.
You know, madam, in the, in the picture you showed, you showed this pristine snow, if he's got a hard cover, how does that look any different? I mean, that hard cover's gonna be covering that thing, it's gonna be covered up, and all look like the same thing you got now.
I took this photo yesterday, I mean.
Well, I understand.
Why did you have the snow there, I mean, come on? We're a civil body. The snow, you're talking about the snow, I just, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference.
I mean, if, if there's no diving board, anything in the pergola, you'd have to live with, because if he moves it over, but the, otherwise, the thing is covered with a hard cover, it's flat. It just doesn't seem like it's, much there.
I, yeah.
It was.
Now, the pool is there, I mean, you know, you don't wanna pool with no snow, I understand that, but he's entitled to a pool.
Well.
Somewhere.
You know, I, I think, if I may, I, I think we've got a couple of questions to go here. Scott, if he just paves that whole area and there's no pool, there's nothing that can be done about that, correct? If it's ground level, pavers, no pool.
Correct, he could put pavers out there.
So what we're really debating about is, is it's not pavers, it's not a patio, it's a pool. Inside that 25 foot variant.
If, if you're asking an opinion from me, I, I think the pool would come up if they said three feet, and that changes.
Well, that, that, I, we just covered that.
The other thing you may wanna consider is, at this point, he's saying he's putting a hard cover.
Right.
Some other restriction you might consider is on a fence related to, once the grade comes up three feet, then you can put another four foot fence on top of that.
Well, and, and I think that would be, I would object to that if I was the neighbor. What I'm trying to figure out is, is that.
Well, you might deal with it now, because once the grade's changed.
We can restrict it, yeah, we can restrict it.
Then he could have, he could just come in and put a four foot fence.
What, what we'll do is, we'll structure the motion accordingly.
I just wanted to.
You're confident there's no law that we're violating by doing that, they, he doesn't have to have a four foot fence if he chooses not to for.
Correct, as long as he has, the state law says a four foot fence or a hard cover, what they call a hard cover, it's actually a tarp that you go walk on.
Right, okay. Here's my, uh, she talked about the pool in the front yard, did you consider that, for some reason disregard that idea?
Well, there's a couple of things, first, there's not much room for it, it can be very difficult to do it there as well.
Okay.
It's, it's in the shade.
Okay.
It's all trees, and maybe you didn't see that on the picture.
Oh, there are a lot of trees there.
And so on this side, no trees whatsoever, we've taken trees down.
That'd be a bummer.
We used to have huge bushes just before Jen, and my other neighbor who was there, we took them down, so we wouldn't be blocked. We certainly don't wanna block anybody's, there's not gonna be a fence, uh, the grade is gonna be minimal, uh, and, you know, it's not.
Are you okay with a requirement for hard cover, no fence, no diving board?
Oh, sure.
I would say opaque fence, just so that they could maybe put one that was transparent.
Well, that's why I used a Brock Doc as an example, because that's an opaque fence. Um, well, you, you could, he could, if we allowed a variant.
The one's the way they call it, a Brock?
Brock, Brock, you know, the guys in North of Town, the little plastic that lasts forever and looks great? I just can't see through it.
I'm just not sophisticated like you, I never heard of that, okay.
No, no, I've learned, okay. Did you move to Warsaw, was it last week or was it?
I just got off the vote two days ago, so you have to bear with me.
That's a good one. Did anybody else have a question about Brock?
I can tell what you were saying was.
It's a high quality fence or a painting or something.
Maroc. Oh, Lord. Now, what's the name of this again?
A pergola. Can you spell it?
Here, you want me to highlight it?
It's, it's, read it, read it.
I'm being abusive.
That's the senior abuse. You're the vice president, you volunteered.
Oh, yeah, well, that's.
All right, um, I'm sorry, are you finished with your comments yet, Jen?
In code 673 dot one, it says a mere inconvenience or a mere economic hardship is not sufficient case, and I heard a couple people say, well, there's a couple trees back there. We measured it, and there's about the same amount of space if the trees are removed as there is in the side yard. So my request is, I'm not against pools, but I would like to see an alternative plan that's on lakeside instead of impairing quite a few people's view to the lake. I would, that, that's what I'm looking for, another alternative that's lakeside, again, leveraging code 63, 6731.
Did that come into play, Scott?
Yeah, 6731 is what you're just to consider.
That's what we're gonna consider, okay, thanks. All right, again, uh, my question, I think I lost, if we were talking about pavers without a pool, you know, in this exact variance situation, with or without objections, is that something that could be done? Yes?
Yes.
So what we're really discussing is, is the ground level pool versus ground level pavers, correct, in the variance?
Well, I think the difference is, is they're changing the grade by three feet.
Well, that, he's already, we're gonna put that in, in the motion to not change that grade, it'll slope the grade, he'll have to slope the grade. That change is not gonna take place.
The corner of the pool will be have to be high.
Well, you, you'd have to move it here, two feet.
Well, it's only gonna be two foot, two inches.
Yeah, at that, at that highest point right here, correct?
Right.
At the corner of the pool, yes, sir.
Yeah.
According to.
But if you put pavers in, they would be at that exact same level.
Right. Well, the fall continues, so then that would move to three feet, four inches.
But if he, again.
No, if he does, if he doesn't build that up.
Agree.
Yeah, he's already agreed to that. But just, so I'm trying to understand the clarity of it, it really is, if you put pavers in without any height, or a pool without any height, that really falls into about the same code of variance, correct?
No, the, the pool, the difference with the pool is, it's, it's more, considered more permanent with the foundation, so it's got that concrete, the depth and their digging.
So it's, it's the permanency of it versus the height of it, or the view change?
I, I don't know if they would, they wouldn't have to seek the same permission if the.
So the, the pool's obviously gonna have a solid foundation, and it's going to be a permanent structure. Pavers don't have a solid foundation, and they're not a permanent structure.
Okay. But again, if I'm talking about line of sight considerations, they're very close to being the same, other than the pool is permanent.
Yeah, you all decide what's the most important reason to either put it in or not put it in, and line of sight, I think, would be one of those things. Obviously, there's all kinds of case law that says you're not entitled to a view.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, just talking to people that bought condominium, and somebody bought a bigger one next to it.
You can plant trees, you can plant bushes.
Well, we run into that, people rolling hills.
Yes.
And nobody wanted to build on those fields that nobody owned, nobody wanted to buy those fields, but they wanted them to stay pristine all the time, you know, they want anybody to build on, so, yeah.
Well, again, I, I, I think we've kind of hit this one about as hard as we can, and, uh, are you concluded with your statements as opposed?
Yeah, and you had asked me about mark pool value, Rick, and if, if I need to give that to you per code 6824. And just over 6826 says otherwise impair, you know, the convenience, the cup, the comfort, the safety, et cetera. And we referenced that in our letter, so I just wanted to, to be open to that. I, I, again, I would like to really understand what will go in, I, I would like to have alternatives for you. That's the only reason I'm opposing, is stay within the setback and have alternatives for you, thank you so much on this whole.
Thank you. All right, with that, is there anyone else to speak? All right, with that, we'll close it to the public. Thoughts?
Well, here, here are my thoughts. I have a problem with the pergola. Uh, I think that absolutely would be a sight problem, and needs to conform to.
Yeah, and he's already agreed to that, the marshal will carry that. The marshal will carry that.
With, with the pool, it seems like a trade off. To me, removing those trees in the front yard is not a small deal. If it's on the south side, you've got big mature trees, they provide shade, you know, it's a place to sit.
It's probably holding some of the land where.
Yeah, and so that, that's no small deal, to sit there and tear all that up and then, you know, put a pool in there and then, you know, then you've got full sun in your house and, um.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, I, I appreciate your comment of the alternatives and I think your comment is, is that's not exactly a small alternative.
I don't claim to understand really the property value thing. I, I, I don't have a feel, I'm not, you know, inexperienced, how much the property value is actually affected, you know, and there's two things you and I have learned about lake property, it's always about the view and the property values, you know, those are the two things that are just huge with lake property.
Yeah.
And so I don't have a good feel for that.
Well, my, my struggle is, is that even though it's a permanent situation, you know, it really is almost a ground level and that's why I was asking those very pointed questions as to how, you know, again, within, it's not within the setbacks and we could rule on it, but, you know, again, if you decided, okay, I don't need a pool, I'm just going to put pavers out there, he could do that really nearly and not have a problem. And I understand with a pool, there are things that do come in with a pool that, that are going to block the view, I fully understand that. I think for the specific homeowner, the real estate value for the specific homeowner, that typically drops the value of a home if you put a pool in because not everybody has grandchildren or children that want to deal with a pool because they're a lot of work, so that.
You're talking about the specific homeowner.
In other words, that would be Mr. Luffring's.
That's his problem, I'm talking about the surrounding.
And I don't know how, perhaps you could weigh in on just a general question of that if you would. I don't know how a pool affects a neighbor as far as value of the property.
Well, I guess.
And I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm really struggling with this.
And I think when we're looking, you know, when a pool would be fenced, we can't see that there's as much of a problem because that noise is a little bit contained, the environment, whatever's going on, is more contained.
Right.
You're talking about this being out in the open for everyone to see.
Okay.
And that has a negative impact on some of the properties.
And I think that's kind of what, what Jen is kind of alluding to.
Thank you, because I, I struggled with that one, I just, I didn't know how a, a pool on a neighbor's property could be that, that offensive, but you're right, there is a.
Would you want to sit out on your patio?
And have a party in my backyard.
And, and I know that's not what this, but I think, you know, we try.
We're trying to take all of it into consideration.
We try to be neighborhood friendly and, and property friendly.
Well, and that's what I like to do.
On this committee at the same time, so I think that's.
No, and I do understand that, that pools can be noisy.
Right, right.
I fully understand that.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
I have a pool two doors from me, there is a fence, there are four girls. Need I say anymore?
Yeah.
Well, keep, keep remembering, your mic's live. Can you say anything about boys or girls? All right.
They're pretty vocal, little.
Okay.
And honestly, I don't have a problem with the pool. I, I really don't.
The, the, the only thing I could come up with is it is inside the variance and the only thing that we've got that we could rule in opposition for is because it's a fixed structure, but as far as line of sight, I think we've kind of covered that, I think pools can be noisy, they can be a detriment, but I'm not sure that's in the code. I mean, they.
No.
The, the things that I worry about are safety, if it's got a cover, it has to follow the state laws. Is this really, as far as what we're allowed to approve or disapprove within zoning, where do we fall on that one? And that's kind of where I'm, you know, we're, we're struggling with here is because, you know, the only thing that, that comes into play is it's within the set line, but it's also in the ground and it's flat. I could see if it was a six foot high above ground pool, that would be a, a value killer in, in anybody's mind. I appreciate your comments, that they are noisy, they can be, you know, but you could throw a party in your garage and it can be just as noisy. I live four doors down from the hospital, I can tell you what a helicopter sounds like at night, too. I don't know, I, I'm, I'm about to shut up here and you guys start thinking about what you want to do for a motion because it's, Tammy's out and I have to receive a motion, so it's up to you three.
Jeff, did you have any thoughts?
I think the pool's a non-issue.
Because of the line of sight?
Yeah, I think the pergola needs to fall within the.
He's already agreed with that.
Fall within the guidelines.
Dan, you're in, you're in agreement with that, as I understand.
Pergola, yes, I'll fall within the guidelines.
Right.
I tend to go with these two fellows, I, I, I understand the view thing, but boy, I mean, he doesn't have any alternatives. If you want a pool, I think a man's entitled to enjoy his property and, you know, the, the tearing up the front yard, the tearing down those trees and that, to me, is kind of a big deal, so I'm inclined to go along with the other two, that, you know, hard cover, no fence, move the pergola, slope the lawn, yeah.
Yeah, leave the.
You know, five years from now, nobody will know anything different because they're used to it by then.
Yeah, all right. With that, would you want to put a motion together?
I would move that we approved this request with the contingencies, and help me out here, that the pergola, what do you want, what do you want to say there about the pergola?
Within a, the pergola has to be within the line of property.
The setback.
Setback.
Within the setback.